So the meeting will go on. Please stand to join me in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. In order to open up our meeting this evening, I'll ask Mrs. Smith to certify the delivery of the warrant.
To either of the constables in the town of Dudley and said county, greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Dudley, qualified to vote in elections and town affairs, to meet in the Connie Magco Yount Auditorium at the Shepherd Hill Regional High School, sixty-eight Dudley House Road in Zed Dudley, on Monday, May twentieth, two thousand twenty-four, and/or Tuesday, May twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four, if needed, and other such times as may be voted, if needed, at seven p.m., then you may take action on the following articles.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Can you certify the delivery and the return of the warrant?
We are hereby directed to serve this warrant by posting attested copies thereof at the Dudley Municipal Center and on the Dudley Town of Dudley website, and by posting notice of availability of the warrant on one cable access channel. Warrant to be posted at least seven days before holding of said meeting. Hereof fail not to make due return of this warrant with your doing thereon to the town clerk at the time of holding of said meeting, given under our hands the sixth date of May in the year two thousand twenty-four. Harry J. Sigurdsson, John Marcy, Mark Landry, Stephen Sullivan, Jason Johnson. I have noticed and notified and warned the inhabitants of the town of Dudley by posting attested copies of the same at the Dudley Municipal Center on the seventh of May, two thousand twenty-four. I also observed that posted on the town's website a notice of availability on the Dudley Cable Access Channel on the seventh of May, two thousand twenty-four, thereby making my return to the Dudley Town Clerk on May seventh, two thousand twenty-four. Jonathan Ruda, Constable Town Clerk.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Prior to beginning this evening, I want to thank you all for turning up for our annual town meeting. It's a great opportunity for us to share a democratic tradition here in the great town of Dudley, founded in seventeen thirty-two, as we head towards our tri-centennial. Uh, we've got some great responsibilities ahead this evening and in future town meetings. Thank you for participating in the manner that we will tonight. Uh, we've been fortunate to have some spirited and thoughtful conversations over the past several years. Uh, I do hope to continue, uh, accepting any term limits placed upon me as town moderator, uh, in this capacity. Uh, prior to beginning, we do have a few reminders, uh, regarding procedure and decorum for our town meeting floor. Uh, all actions in the meeting are governed by the Town of Dudley Bylaws, which are available on the town website as well as in the public library. Uh, one bit of information, uh, tonight, only residents or the town of the town or agents speaking on behalf of the town, uh, or members of departments who are on and representing their departments are permitted to speak. We do have Town Council, Michelle Rendazzo, uh, down here waiting, uh, who I may refer to for procedural questions or matters of the law, uh, at any point during this meeting. Uh, as a reminder, the town bylaws are specific to no hats or wits in the auditorium. The only exception to that are active-duty military or uniformed police or fire personnel. In order to speak tonight, you must be recognized by me. Uh, approach the microphone in the center aisle, uh, and when permitted, uh, you'll go ahead and state your name and full address here in Dudley. Refer to previous speakers as that, not previous speakers by name. And, uh, as a reminder, there is no back-and-forth debate on the floor between speakers. All comments are questions directed through me, and I will direct the questions, uh, where appropriate to be answered if I cannot answer them. I will do my best to adhere to Robert's Rules of Order that govern our meeting, as outlined in our town bylaws. As has been our practice since my participation in this role as town moderator, we have modified Robert's Rules of Order relative to speaking time from ten minutes per person per article to five minutes or two separate visits, totally no more than five minutes per article. Uh, that is not accepting, uh, question-answered time, uh, within that five-minute allotted. As a reminder, maintain appropriate decorum in between articles as votes pass. Uh, we are not here to cheer or gee, or we are here to go ahead and vote with our clickers and accept responsibility for the outcomes of the meeting floor. Uh, it is, um, going to be clicker tutorial time at this point. You should have received a little white clicker, uh, with, uh, a number of buttons on it. Uh, if you did not receive a clicker and you are a registered voter here in the town of Dudley, uh, please report to the back, uh, where our, uh, assistants will be able to get those to you. One of the assistants is a little bit shorter than the other. Uh, his name is Colin. Uh, he is, uh, my little minion this evening. Uh, nice job being here, Colin. Thank you for joining us tonight. Uh, with the clicker tutorial, the only two buttons that you're going to focus on are the number one slash A button and the number two slash B button. The one A represents a vote in the affirmative, a yes vote or an aye. A two is a nay or a no. None of the other buttons are valuable tonight, none of the other buttons work. There may be some time where the clicker is slow to respond, and, uh, we'll go over what that looks like in just a moment with our tutorial. Uh, this needs to be returned on exiting, uh, the auditorium floor. If you do leave the auditorium floor to use the restroom, uh, one of our assistants will ask for your clicker. When you do come back, uh, they will give you a new clicker. Going home with the clicker is absolutely forbidden. Uh, we will track you and, no, it's actually a joke, I have no idea where they're going. But you get the idea, they're very expensive and they're fantastic tools, uh, for us. So what we are going to do is if you look up at the screen, a successful yes vote is a one A. A successful no vote for you is a two B. It will be indicated by a green light on the LCD screen, that little window on the left-hand top. If the vote was not registered, there will be a red light and a circle with a line through it displaying on the LCD screen. This is where your patience will take over. Give it a one-second count in your head and then press your vote button again. If there's any real issue, uh, at the conclusion of the vote voting, which is timed, uh, you will see a counter on the lower right-hand side of the screen. You can go ahead and just call, you know, point of order. I'll go ahead and make sure your vote gets recorded as you would share it with me. Shall we do a tutorial? Let's do a tutorial. It's a very challenging question. Is today Monday, May twenty, twenty twenty-four? A one A for yes, a two B for no? If you notice, like, down in the bottom right, it is counting down. I believe we have it set for fifteen seconds, is that right? Okay. Should be ample enough time to cast your vote. And only eight percent of us do not know the ding today. That's actually really good odds. Uh, we should be in good shape moving forward tonight. Uh, so, does anybody have any questions or procedure relating to the clicker? All right. Well, seeing that there are none, I just want to introduce some key members on the floor who may be talking tonight at various points. There will be other members of the audience, such as department heads, and again, Ms. Rendazzo, who may be asked to approach the microphone. Uh, our Board of Selectment Chair, Kerry Sigurdsson, Selectman John Marcy, Selectman Mark Landry, Selectman Stephen Sullivan, uh, Jason Johnson's in absenture or arriving late, and Town Administrator, John Ruda, to my immediate right on the floor. To our left is the FAA, Michael Maier, Chair, John Curry, Anne Gudrow, John, Joan Gardekie, Janet Deshane, and Robin Watson. Uh, without their participation, uh, in the town of the town government, we are essentially at a standstill. So it's time, let's get into Article One. Article One, to see if the town will vote to receive the reports of several town officers in all committees or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Maier.
The FAA recommends that you pass Article One as written, isolated.
Second.
Motion's made in second, a discussion on Article One. Seeing none, we'll call Article One to a vote. All in favor, aye. All opposed, nay. Thank you, Ms. Smith. Article One passes ninety-six percent. Article Two, to hear and act on the recommendations of the Board of Selectment and the Finance Appropriation Advisory Committee or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Maier.
The FAA recommends you pass Article Two as written, isolated.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, a discussion on Article Two. Seeing none, we move Article Two to a vote. All in favor, aye. All opposed, nay. Motion Two has passed. Article Two. Uh, Article Three, uh, prior to engaging in Article Three, I will not be reading the entire text or line items, uh, in Article Three. If there is any discussion to be had on Article Three, I ask that once you've introduced your name and address to the audience, uh, and to myself, that you refer to the specific line by name and value, and then talk to that should you have any questions. Article Three, FY twenty twenty-five budget, to see if the town will vote to determine the sums of money the town will raise and appropriate tomorrow or transfer from available funds to defray the charges and expenses of the town and provide for a reserve fund, determining the compensation for elected officials and including debt and interest for the ensuing fiscal year beginning on July one, twenty twenty-four, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Maier.
The FAA recommends the town appropriate a total sum of twenty-nine million, one hundred and seventy-two thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars to fund the town's budget for fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-four, including its assessments for the Dudley-Chattler Regional School District and purpose and amounts listed, and with the funding sources as printed in Article Three of the warrant. And we'd like to identify some specific revenue amounts. Water, the sewer department, sewer funding, uh, sewer fees will be twenty-four thousand dollars. User charges of one million, six hundred and eighteen dollars, or excuse me, one million, six hundred and eighteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight dollars, and a retained earnings of two hundred and forty thousand, seven hundred and five dollars. Water funding from the water fees will be seventy-five thousand, five hundred. User charges will be two million, seven hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred and eighty-one dollars, and a transfer from retained earnings of one hundred and twenty-six thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars. A total budget of two million, two million, four million, eight hundred and sixteen thousand, ninety-three dollars and fifty-six cents, isolated.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, a discussion on Article Three. Seeing none, we move Article Three to a vote. All in favor, aye. All opposed, nay. Article Three passes beyond the two-thirds majority required. Article Four, authorized revolving funds, to see if the town will vote to establish fiscal year twenty twenty-five spending limits for the revolving funds set forth in Chapter thirty-four, subsections thirty-four dash five, authorized revolving funds to the town's general bylaws as printed below, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Maier.
The FAA recommends you pass Article Four as written, isolated.
Motion's made in second, a discussion on Article Four. Mr. Maier.
Uh, I just want to clarify that these amounts are not the amounts that we are putting to those accounts. These are just the total upper spending limit that are included to those accounts.
Thank you for the clarification. Additional discussion on Article Four? Seeing none, we move Article Four to a vote. All in favor, aye. All opposed, nay. Article Four passes. Article Five, Water Sewer Commissioners, to see if the town will transfer from sewer retained earnings account number zero, zero, six, zero, 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 three, five, nine, zero, 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 one, three hundred thousand and zero cents for the payment of Webster, eighty thousand dollars for Webster True Up for FY twenty twenty-two, and two hundred and twenty thousand dollars for Webster True Up for FY twenty twenty-three, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Maier.
The FAA recommends you pass Article Five as written, isolated.
Motion's made in second, a discussion for Article Five? Seeing none, we move Article Five to a vote. All in favor, aye. All opposed, nay. Article Five passes. Prior to reading Article Six, I will, uh, acknowledge one mistake in the introduction to the clickers. If you mistakenly click, uh, yes for an article and you wanted to vote no, as long as you change your vote before the timer runs out, you will be all set. Just click the, the no line or the two, and vice versa, if you didn't want to vote no on anything tonight. That's unanimous, they just switch it all to one. Article Six, Water Sewer Commissioners, to see if the town will transfer from water retained earnings account number listed, four thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars and zero cents for unpaid bills from FY twenty twenty-three, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Maier.
The FAA moves a, uh, excuse me, the FAA recommends you approve Article Six as written, isolated.
Second.
Motion's made in second, a discussion for Article Six? Seeing none, we move Article Six to a vote. This does require a four-fifths majority. All in favor, aye. All opposed, nay. Article Passes above the eighty percent. Article Seven, to see if the town will appropriate from free cash the amount of ten thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars and twenty-five cents for unpaid bill to Boston Mutual from FY twenty twenty-three, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Maier.
The FAA recommends you pass Article Seven as written, isolated.
Second.
Motion's made in second, a discussion for Article Seven? Seeing none, we move Article Seven to a vote. All in favor, aye. All opposed, nay. Article Passes above the eighty percent. Article Eight, Police Vehicle, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of fifty-four thousand, five hundred and ninety-six dollars and zero cents from free cash to pay for the purchase of a police vehicle, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Maier.
The FAA recommends you pass Article Eight as written, isolated.
Motion's made in second, a discussion for Article Eight? Mr. Maier.
Uh, yeah, just, uh, wanted to let you know that this, this vehicle was approved by Capitol Department of the City.
Thank you. Additional discussion Article Eight? Seeing none, we move Article Eight to a vote. All in favor, aye. All opposed, nay. Article Eight has passed. Article Nine, Treasurer Collector and Town Clerk Annual Increases, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of four thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars and zero cents from free cash to the budget line number listed to fund the salary increase for the treasurer collector for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, and three thousand, five hundred and sixty-six dollars and zero cents from free cash to budget line item listed to fund salary increase for the town clerk for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Maier.
The FAA recommends you approve this article, isolated.
Motion's been made in second, a discussion on Article Nine? Seeing none, we move Article Nine to a vote. All in favor, aye. All opposed, nay. Article Nine has passed. Article Ten, Fund Employee Merit Rule, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of twenty thousand, seventy-one dollars and thirty-two cents from free cash to fund merit-based increases for non-union employees, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Maier.
The FAA recommends you pass this article as written, isolated.
Second.
Motion's made in second, a discussion for Article Ten? Seeing none, we move Article Ten to a vote. All in favor, aye. All opposed, nay. We're gonna go ahead and see if we've got fifty percent. Yes, sir. Thank you. We'll do is reset the count. We'll go ahead and recalibrate. At this time, we call Article Ten to a vote. All in favor, aye. All opposed, nay. Article Ten has failed. Article Eleven, Mandatory DAM inspections, to see if the town will vote to appropriate thirty thousand, thirty thousand, three hundred and four dollars and zero cents from free cash for the purpose of performing four regulatory DAM inspections and reporting requirements in accordance with three oh two CMR ten point zero zero and match general law, Chapter two fifty-three, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Maier.
Uh, the FAA recommends you pass this DAM bill, isolated.
Do I have a second? Motion's been made in second on the DAM bill. Are there any, is there any discussion on Article Eleven? Seeing none, we move Article Eleven to a vote. All in favor, aye. All opposed, nay. Article Eleven has passed. Article Twelve, Shared Driveway Standards, to establish design standards for shared driveways, to see if the town will vote to amend the Dudley zoning bylaw, Section seven point zero one point zero zero, driveway slash curb cut permit, subsection four point F, by deleting the strike-through language and inserting the following underline language, including "Design Standards for Construction of Shared Driveways", and to change the special permit granting authority from the Zoning Board of Appeals to the Planning Board for more than two lots, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Maier.
Uh, the FAA will defer to the Planning Board for motion.
Thank you, Mr. Maier.
Good evening. Richard Clark, sixty-five Airport Road, Planning Board Member. Uh, and we move to amending Article as printed in the warrant with the end.
Thank you. Motion's been made to amend Article Twelve to the text that was printed in the one-pager, uh, front and back that was available out at the front table. Motion's been made, we have it seconded. Is there any discussion on the amended Article Twelve? Yes, Mr. Dryer.
John Dryer, sixty-six, Oxford Road. Uh, I would urge people to vote for this zoning article. At last town meeting, I was defeated, and I thought, right, so, because, um, it basically took away the person's right to share driveway. And, uh, the planning board, the public hearing, uh, they're extremely professional, extremely open-minded, uh, express their concerns with how, uh, some developers may be using the shared driveway by law as it exists today to get around the subdivision control, you know, rules and regulations. And so, uh, you know, we had a really productive conversation. And then this amended zoning article, uh, does preserve the right to a shared driveway for two lots. And the original reason why we put that in was only to give it was, uh, the master plan when we did that back twenty-three years ago. We were concerned that all the development was being done along the primary roads, and nothing was being developed in the back lanes. So we came up with five lots and said, well, or it needs to make sense. They need a shared driveway, which don't mind, multiple driveways come out. And so, uh, this preserves that right that we had this long. But what it also does is it gives the planning board the tool they need, so that if someone comes in and proposes a third house, that it's a special permit by the planning board. Today, it's a special permit even as only for appeals, which really doesn't make sense. It's just, so, uh, but it also, it takes into consideration industrial development and commercial development, where there may be shared drives that an industrial park or some commercial endeavor may have. And there's got to be design standards to make sure it's not the taxpayer footing the bill because of poor drainage, things not being made, you know, with the gate rent. And so, uh, I, I thought this is a wonderful compromise. I applaud the planning board for the way they handled this, and I would ask everyone's vote to approve this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dryer. Additional discussion on Article Twelve as amended? Yes, Mr. Chinak?
You know, I got one question because that, you've got two drivers coming to one, right? And you got two different people. And I know people, they're gonna be friendly, and then they're gonna fight each other. You can vote, but anyway, but this is my thought. That you're gonna make a lot of enemies between people if you share the driveway. Because nobody gonna plow, or they're gonna fight each other about it. I hear a story about it, so up to you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional discussion Article Twelve? Article Twelve requires a two-thirds majority of vote. Go ahead and move that Article Two, we voted this time. All in favor, aye. All opposed, nay. Yes. The motion was to amend and accept the amended language. And my clicker wasn't working, so the point of order was fantastic timing. Okay. It will. Give it a try now. Article Twelve as amended has passed. Article Thirteen, the Quinabong Railroad, Acquisition of Land, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectment to acquire by gift, purchase, or otherwise deed, leasehold, easements, license, or any other interests in real property in, on, over, across, under, and along all or any portion of the land, premises, easements, or right-of-way in Dudley, on, under, over, or adjacent to inactive mass DOT railroad right-of-way known as Southbridge Secondary Railroad Line, mileposts, Webster T L to Thompson, Connecticut, T L, Southbridge T L to Thompson, Connecticut, T L, with an area of proposed occupancy of twenty thousand, five hundred linear feet shown on the plan on file with the town clerk as it may be amended for purposes of establishing, constructing, operating, improving, and maintaining a multi-use trail for transportation, open space, and active recreation purposes, including access thereto, and for all of the purposes for which rail trails are used in the Commonwealth, on such terms and conditions as the Board of Selectment deems to be in the best interest of the town. And further, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds, one hundred dollars and zero cents from free cash, including all costs and expenses related thereto, and/or accept gifts from these pur, for these purchases. And further, to authorize the Board of Selectment to take such actions and execute such documents and agreements as are necessary to effectuate the purpose of this article, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Maier.
The FAA recommends that you pass Article Thirteen as written, with one exception, uh, that no funds be appropriated for this purpose, isolated.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion on Article Thirteen? Seeing none, we move Article Thirteen to a vote. All in favor, aye. All opposed, nay. Article Thirteen has passed. Article Fourteen, Water Line Easement. Article 14, water line easement, to see if the town will vote to authorize the board of selectmen to acquire by purchase, gift, and/or eminent domain, a permanent utility, water line easement, in, on, under, along, and across Eagle Drive, as shown on a plan entitled Rocky Hill Estates, dated August 1, 1989, prepared by Parrel Land Survey, Southbridge Mass., Plan Book 623, Plan 67, a copy of which is on file with the assessor's office, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Sigunovich?
Thank you. I move to approve Article 14 as printed in the warrant.
Motion's made and seconded. Discussion on Article 14? Seeing none, we move Article 14 to a vote. All in favor, aye. All opposed, nay. Article 14 has passed. Article 15, the Historical Commission, to see if the town will vote to amend the use of town-owned property known as diehouse property located on Ardland Place, Assessor Mount 117, Lot 076, with a total of seven point forty-one acres, to be used for municipal parkland, and further, for the Dudley Historical Commission to name it Centennial Park for the tricentennial of Dudley, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Mayor?
Uh, the FAA will defer to the Historical Commission for motion.
Thank you. As a member of the Historical Commission here, please.
Thank you. I, I move that we pass over Article 15.
Well, we're gonna use the feature voice for a moment while I release the battery. Um, motion's been made and seconded for Article 15. Is there any discussion? Yes, Mr. Brier.
And John Brier, Sixty-Six, Oxford Road. Uh, I would ask if we reject the motion to pass over and, uh, bring it to defeat this motion.
Mr. Sigunovich? There it is. Hello. The reason why I had put in to pass that over was because the, uh, request came in from the Historical Commission. I'll, I'll read the email. "The Historical Commission wishes to withdraw the argotical related to the diehouse property. Too many important questions about the site have to be answered, and time does not permit these to be answered before the meeting. That's all, that's why I made that motion."
Thank you, Mr. Sigunovich. Yes, Mayor?
Joyce Narazinski, like you asked, um, I have questions about this, so I think you just answer them. I don't think I want to pass it over. I think I want it to go through the board. Um, I spoke of this a couple of weeks ago in the selectmen's meeting. There, there are way too many questions about this particular article. Um, it's an empty lot. There's no longer a building. It's just a cement slab. And there were questions of, is it gonna be for Dudley residents only, or is this gonna be for public use? No, no answers to that. The roadway is way too narrow to be having two lanes of traffic to access that property. Concerns about adding police patrols for this new space, adding a water and electric cost to the town. Who's gonna pay that bill, especially with water prices? Um, over the last year, we've had a lot of discussions about litter. It's a huge topic in the town of Dudley. We're creating a new space for litter, but this aren't passing. Um, it's an environmental concern. You're creating a space right on the water that people are going to litter. I do want this voted on tonight and not passed over.
Thank you. Sigunovich?
I'd like to get a little closer to the mic so I'll stand here. I'd like to withdraw. Given what has been said just now by residents, I'd like to withdraw my motion.
Motion for President John? Mr. Brier? Sorry, you just out of the field.
Uh, with that being said, I'm urging people to vote this down, uh, because I'm, I'm a-
Mr. Brier, I think we, so the motion was made to pass over. We actually don't have a motion on the floor. You'd like to make a motion?
Oh, okay. Well, I'm not gonna make a motion for the historical.
Very well.
Hi, I'm Jim Floss. Thank you, Artlock. I'm calling, uh, this. I'm a little confused at where we, where we stand right now.
So, we don't have a motion on the floor, so we're not discussing anything at this point?
Okay.
The motion to pass over was withdrawn. Uh, there's been no motion to consider the article at this point. I'm gonna need a motion to consider the article and have it seconded. But we're gonna have to create a motion. What was deferred to the Historical Commission is by FAA. I'll adjourn motion for Article 15 either in affirmative or opposed, Mr.-
Scott Skouski, Eight Catherine Street. I'll make a motion that we defeat, that we vote down Article number fifteen.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to pick Article 15. Is there discussion on Article 15? Yes, thank you.
Here I am again. Jim Floss, Twenty-Three, Ardland Place. I would, I, hopefully, everybody will vote this down.
Please speak directly with-
I hope that everybody will vote this down. Uh, the property is a very small, uh, area, and all the people have discussed the access to the property being limited to a single lane. You actually have to stop a little traffic in the other direction, huh? Um, it's had a lot of liability issues. There's a lot of lack of plan. This all came as kind of a field of dreams, uh, planning process of maybe if we build it, people will come, and people will pay for it. Uh, it's gonna be an expense to the town if people don't come, and if people don't pay for it. Uh, there's gonna be a lot of planning that needs to take place before we can go anywhere with this. Uh, we have to do some environmental impacts due to the fact that it's right up on two lies of water. And there are other problems with it. And I just hope that everybody realizes that this is gonna impact your property values, and it's gonna impact your access.
Thank you very much for the comments. Uh, go back to Mr. Brier. Is that volume okay in the back?
The reason why I'm urging the defeat of this particular article, uh, is note assessment is the, the negative reflection of the Dudley Historical Commission. They've done wonderful work. What I believe, as one of the previous speakers had mentioned, there's better places. And I think that the previous speaker was a member, I believe, of the open space plan that just came out. To invest that time and resources and engineering into the town beach and improve the access, and maybe doing something there, that should be the direction to go, not this far. So, please do that.
Thank you very much for the additional discussion on Article 15. Yes, sir.
Just a point of order. Can you tell us if the vote is to defeat it or is it opposed or?
I will do that if there's no additional discussion. Seeing that there's no additional discussion, a vote in the affirmative, a one or a yes vote, means you are voting to defeat the article. A two or a no means you are in favor of the article passing as written. The motion on the floor was to defeat this article, so a yes vote is actually to defeat it. A no vote is actually to improve it. Are there any questions on that point of order? At this time, I'll call Article 15 to a vote. I'll give the affirmative to defeat, one. I'll give the negative to defeat, two. Uh, Article 15 has been defeated. Article sixteen, I'll read this entire text before making joking. Uh, Article sixteen, uh, from the police department solicitors by law, to see if the town will adopt following bylaws to regulate soliciting and canvassing in the town of Dudley, or take any other action relative thereto. Chief Collins?
I recommend the article. Make a motion to pass the article as written, and I so move.
Article's been made and seconded. Is there discussion for Article sixteen?
Uh, currently, we don't have anything on our books for solicitors. Uh, this would regulate it, prevent, um, this rule on, it's out there, uh, and you have one year license. So, again, there'll be some regulations on when you can solicit, and not give it to us. Uh, that includes solar, any profits, so, uh, any nonprofits, like the Girl Scouts, politicians, they won't have to do that. But solar, electricity, windows, stuff like that, that would have to, uh, get a permit from us and abide by the rules and regulations.
Thank you. Yes?
Steven Christensen, Nineteen, Ashway, Dudley. Would this article apply to religious organizations? Would this apply to religious organizations?
Uh, Chief?
Uh, it's clearly marked that, uh, it would not. So, any nonprofit, religious, political, um, Girl Scouts, nonprofits, they would not apply.
Any additional discussion for Article sixteen? It's a different view from down here. Uh, we'll move Article sixteen to a vote. All in favor, aye. All opposed, nay. Article sixteen has passed. Article seventeen, noise bylaws, see if the town will adopt the following bylaws to regulate unnecessary excessive and annoying noise in the town of Dudley, which either noise disturbs, injures, or endangers the comfort, repose, health, peace, or safety of reasonable persons of normal sensitivities, or take any other action relative thereto.
Um, at this point, I'd like to pass the article over to the fall meeting for more information.
Motion's been made and seconded to pass over to the fall town meeting for more information. Is there discussion on passing this article over? Seeing none, we move Article seventeen to a vote. All in favor to pass over? Aye. All opposed, nay. Article seventeen will be passed over to fall town meeting for more information. Articles eighteen through twenty-three are all citizen petition articles for which town council has opined that they are not in proper legal form and/or they are in conflict with state law. As such, should the meeting vote on these articles, they will merely provide a sense of the meeting and would not be legally binding or effective. With that in mind, I ask the meeting whether it wishes to discuss and debate each article, or whether the meeting would prefer to pass over the articles. If the town's meeting prefers to pass over these articles, I would entertain a motion to pass over Articles eighteen to twenty-three collectively. Motion's been made and seconded for Articles twenty, eighteen to twenty-three to be passed over. At this time, is there any discussion to pass over Articles eighteen to twenty-three collectively? Yes, sir. Mr. Chenek?
Three, ninety. I sponsor those articles. Let people vote on the articles, or just have them off the table, because you don't like my idea. People can have to come here, I do thousand, and vote against. I have no problem. You just cut me completely. I have no chance today, brother. You, you, you're less friend. But, uh, this, this is my idea. If you hate it, you know, what I can do. I take it, you guys. I take it for my friends, nothing. But it looks like you guys decided to help. And this is, I don't know, I can have discrimination over that.
Thank you. Additional discussion to pass over Articles eighteen to twenty-three? Seeing none, we move the pass over of Articles eighteen to twenty-three to a vote. All in favor to pass over? Aye. All opposed, nay. Uh, we have passed over Articles eighteen to twenty-three. Article twenty-four, to see if the town will vote to amend the town of Dudley bylaws by adding a new section labeled Permanent Audit Committee with the following text. Hold please. I'm gonna back that up a moment. Uh, Article twenty-four, to see if the town will vote to amend the town of Dudley bylaws as printed below by adding a new section labeled Permanent Audit Committee with the text listed. Mr. Mayor?
The FAA recommends that you pass Article twenty-four with the following amendment. Very last sentence.
If you could, read the original sentence and then the, uh, proposed amendment.
Original sentence says, "To the town administrator shall include in the annual budget a sum of money sufficient to satisfy the estimated cost of hiring and conducting the audit as presented by the audit committee to the board of selectmen and the FAA." And then the language to say, "Board of Selectmen and approved by the FAA." And I so move.
Motion's been made and seconded. Mr. Sullivan?
Thank you, Mr. Brier. Stephen Sullivan, Cardinal Drive. Uh, just a couple of quick questions. We conducted a public hearing on the warrant, and the lead petitioner was there. And before I ask my questions, I just want to publicly state that the lead petitioner does a great job. I used to serve him on previous court, and despite what someone wrote recently, a bunch of times on social media, I have no malice towards John, I'm sorry, to the lead petitioner. And I appreciate his efforts. You don't always agree, but the end of the day, you're friends. So, my questions were, we were assured that night by the lead petitioner that the audit committee would be made up of residents. And told it would be amended, that it's not in here. If you vote for the audit committee, you can have people that do not live in your town on the audit committee. I asked the lead petitioner that night, could it be a business owner that's not a resident? I was told that he was gonna look into that and think about it. As it stands now, you can have a business owner in town, a CPA or attorney who feels we are that committee, would not be a resident, it would be on that committee. And my third question, which was not addressed that night, and I don't think it's gonna be addressed, was in the article, it just asks for individuals having financial expertise and independence in daily operations in the town. So, I asked what constituted financial expertise. There was no answer. So, as it's written, it's open to non-residents, it's open to business owners that have a business in town that are non-residents, and there's no qualification beyond this committee, except that a moderator would appoint you, a selectman would appoint you, and the FAA would appoint you. So, you're gonna end up with conceivably, realistically, three people that are not, are not residents of our town, have no financial interest in that town, to be on that committee.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Mr. Brier?
I believe the previous speaker may be working for a mental refresh. What we provided is amended, where with the FAA has offered or their approval on is the amended word. And I've taken those suggestions from the Selectment Publicity, and there is a residence required under membership appointments. I mean, if you'd like, I can bring, I can walk up and amend the copy out front. I also did email them all to each member individually and to collect against the board, and there have been no changes since I emailed. But do you want me to give the copies so you follow with me?
Just clarifying question for me. Is the Article twenty-four as printed in the warrant, the amended version?
No.
It is not. Do we have a printed copy of that amended version available?
Yes.
Oh, well, I apparently missed a handout.
And they were emailed as well. I could bring the version up.
Mr. Mayor, would you consider withdrawing your motion so we can address the amended article?
The FAA will withdraw its motion.
Motion's been withdrawn. Thank you very much. If you care to make a motion to accept the amended version of Article twenty-four?
The FAA recommends that you pass Article twenty-four's amended version with the amendment on the last sentence.
Was there a second? Second. Motion's been made and seconded to pass Article twenty-four as amended. Thank you all who showed me the amended copies. That's really my bad. I own that. Mr. Bryant?
Yeah. And in regards, so with the previous speaker's concern, they're addressed under membership appointments, the audit committee, which shall serve without compensation, shall assist three members who aren't residents of the town of Dudley, and must be able to pass a core check conducted by the town. That was a direct request from the Selectment for me to add in there. I have no problem with the final edit that the FAA would like to see, where it's approved by the FAA, because what we do want to avoid is a situation where say the audit committee recommends a three hundred thousand dollar audit, and he's not there. All right? The FAA is in an independent board as well, and so, and since at the end of the day, you are responsible for our dollars and cents. I think the audit committee getting the FAA's approval, you know, for the budgetary amount is what we asked. We asked that from all of our departments. I don't think they should be any different. So, I have no problem with that amendment. So, please vote yes. I might be wasting a lot's time because we debated this thing enough trouble.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Mr. Sullivan, apologies on you being put on the spot like that.
I appreciate the lead petitioner. The copy of the warrant I had in my folder tonight that was signed by the board of selectmen did not incorporate those changes. Yes, he did send out an email with the proposed change, but the email was not in file documents. I did not have the amended handout, so I appreciate the information. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any additional discussion on amended Article twenty-four? Mr. Landry?
I've stated several times at prior meetings, some concerns I have with this at this time. I spoke with the Department of President about the audit committees that they recommend for towns after they go in and they do a review. They have started that process with the town of Dudley, and they recommended tabling this to the fall until their facts are out, their reports are out, and their recommendations are out, which would be plenty of time to be informed, make an informed decision at the fall. So, right now, they're, with the limited discussion, because they didn't do their review of the town, they're asking what triggers why. You have to have a reason like they do, just not to have another layer on top of what we already have, because they're gonna put another layer on top of that, and it doesn't stop. I don't think any of us want to keep adding to the government. So, you gotta vote the way you gotta vote, and I appreciate you coming out to vote either way. But just like, you know, if an amendment triggered it, BYU, DLS, they're the ones that oversee best practices for all the cities and towns. They're the ones that will make our recommendations if the town even needed this, or really falling short in what we have to bring up to improve it outside of this. So, that's just some information you take with you and make your vote yes or no. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Landry. Yes, sir?
Mark Prisensky here, North Road. I just have a question on the audit committee. How deep can this audit committee go? For instance, the big payment we have is the Shepherd Hill or Dudley Child and Regional School District. Would they be able to look into any of their finances on that? No. So, it's just restricted. It would just be a separate budget item, right? So, it's just looking at the town of Dudley's activities financially?
That's correct. On the municipal, yes. Mr. Bryant?
That's an excellent question from the previous speaker. In order, because it's a regional school district, in order to have an audit committee set up for the school, there's two paths. One is to have the school committee actually support the creation of the audit committee, and then they would be able to put it on the ballot, the general ballot, that both towns would then have to vote on. If the school committee was resistant to establishing an audit committee, the citizen petition is a little bit more complicated. You'd have to get ten percent of the registered voters in Dudley to sign a petition, ten percent of the registered voters in Charlton, and then you can bring it up to the town to let it go. The reason why we did not address the school committee right now is there's been transition. We do have a new business manager which is coming on board. I'm sure he's gonna wanna know, and I'm very optimistic that the school, right, they wanna improve people's grades and quality of education, and a lot of the financial stuff is getting beyond them as well. And so, I think they would be more well, and I'm hoping to have discussions with them, you know, before the next Fall Town meeting, and see if they can just, you know, find a solution where we can get them the tools they need to manage finance, so that they can focus on the education side. I wasn't prepared to do school, the citizen petitions, and do both towns. And then, as far as the previous speaker's comments about the Mass Department of Revenue, I guess the best analogy I can think of is, you don't decide to get a colonoscopy after you've been diagnosed with colon cancer. You get it annually in the hopes of preventive colon cancer.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Mr. Landry, yes?
Mr. Moderator, just to add to that analogy, you have doctors, professionals who determine at what age you start getting. So, yes, is someone there telling you, this is the line, this is when you start getting, and this procedure is for it. Thank you.
Thank you. I need this additional discussion on Article twenty-four as amended? All right, we'll move the amended Article twenty-four to a vote at this time. All in favor, aye. All opposed, nay. Article twenty-four has passed. Seeing this hour of articles, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion's been made and seconded. We'll do a traditional voice vote for this. All in favor of adjourned?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much for coming out. We'll see you all in the Fall.